Would anyone like to come to the microphone and speak about anything that we have on our voting agenda tonight? Would you state your name and address please?
Mr. Gomez, Samuel York. I'm here to speak tonight about the proposal to establish a police body within the city school district. As I understand it is on the agenda tonight? Okay, my first question is, has the school district pursued the option of adopting policies and parameters that will govern this new police force before it actually adopts a resolution allowing for notifications of all before the court of common pleas?
We have defined what those roles would be within requirement of the law. So that has been established, this is not anything goes thing, it has been pretty set determined what duties and responsibilities would be required by the school police.
Can you state for the record please, a point of clarification, the law which is you are referring to? I'm assuming you're the speaker of the public school code, public school code which authorizes the formation of the police force?
That's correct, the public school code, I'm not sure if I have it off the top of my head, does allow for the creation of a school police, subject however to approval by the court in terms of how that would be implemented in that nature. The resolution that is on the agenda tonight does have the restrictions that the board is, if it approves the resolution would allow for moving forward with that process. I'm not sure what...
Will any man or woman on the board be supplying us to read the resolution into the record please?
I'd like to do it now, because right now it's part of the presentation. They have resolved that the Board of School Directors for the school district of the city of York designates the individuals listed below to act as school police officers and authorizes the superintendent or the court solicitor on behalf of the school district to file an application with the Court of Common Pleas of York County requesting the court to, number one, approve the appointment of those individuals as school police officers and, number two, grant school police officers the same authority and powers including, but not limited to, the power to arrest and issue or file summary citations for the enforcement of summary offenses that are or may hereafter be exercised under the authority of law or ordinance by the police of the municipality wherein the school property is located, as well as the authority to detain students and individuals until the arrival of lawful law enforcement for crimes, misdemeanors, and/or felonies. And following that is listing of the individuals, their position, and which buildings to which they would be primarily assigned.
That is familiar. I'm familiar with the text of the law which grants you the power to afford the police force. I'm wondering if there was any tailoring that's being done for the specific implementation on the York City school district campuses? Is this going to be modeled after any other existing police forces in any other school districts that we may inform of? Or is this something that you intend to discuss in the future? Because that is my concern, that this hasn't been fleshed out diligently enough and publicly enough to move forward tonight. So I would say, you should seek further community input and provide more details as to what this would mean for the learning environment, for the community, if it is implemented as intended. Right now, the details haven't scanned, as far as I'm aware, I haven't seen any details released as of... What is the intended purpose and scope of the police force that is intended to operate in the York City school district? I think that those are valid concerns.
Well, I agree with you that they are valid concerns, and I have some other questions that I didn't know if you're going to take or comment in discussion now or we're going to make it until we get to that part of our agenda? Because I don't want to repeat the process of coming up. Have the conversation now or we have the conversation later in the agenda?
This is, and the question is to listen to the public comment. And then the deliberation of the board will be under the action items of the board.
I understand that since we opened the floor for comment, are we going to repeat the conversation later?
My purpose would be to give that as part of the actual deliberation of the board to actually...
Okay, thank you.
If that's a prepared rule, that's fine, we have time to go.
So would public comment be, once again, open, was the item specifically on table or should I just press my concerns at this moment? What I would like to say is, without establishing any parameters and procedures, you're giving an expansive curfew to the police force. And you as a school board would, to be quite frank, giving up your powers and your duties to shape and form this police force as you may see fit, of course within the law. The parameters are there, now if you've granted, as worded, and according to the public school code, you're allowing for the ambiguous nature and verbiage of the law to color what the police force would be able to do and how it would be able to function. I think that you should exert greater control onto that process if it is that you want to have the police force. For example, I saw press coverage that indicated that the discussion of whether there would be tasers or firearms was something that would be discussed in the future. It seems to indicate we would deal with the details, most of we had the power to assume responsibility and enact it. I think that's an imbalance, I think that you as a school board, along with some community input, should decide and should help shape those critical aspects of policy regarding this police force. Another thing I wanted to address with this board is, what is the overall role of having the police force? For example, the law grants you the authority to enter into cooperative agreements with the city police department if you would so wish to do so. Is that something that the board wishes to pursue or would the solicitor like to address that?
This is an opportunity for public comment, not for debate.
I'm not looking for debate, Mr. Gomez, I'm seeking clarification, as a point of clarification. You may answer or you may not, as a point of clarification, as a citizen. I would like for you to address whether or not the board, if it establishes this police force, will be seeking a cooperative agreement to establish jurisdiction in the city of the York City Police Department. If anybody would like to answer that question, it would be most interesting.
This is the balance within the law to accommodate a lot of testing of the school police force. There is still the city police force, so I don't understand what you're asking.
The legal that you're using to authorize the police force to create it. It allows for you to create a cooperative agreement, you will have a police force within the school district while you also have the surrounding and existing York City Police Department. Will you answer into a cooperative agreement or will the school district and its campuses and properties be covered solely by the York City school district police force in its board?
Part of what we've addressed as the... of the resolution was that they have the authority to detain students and individuals detained by lawful law enforcement for crimes and misdemeanors. So there is that interrelationship that occurred before. So we are not taking away from any of the authority or performance of the York City police. We are the first ones there authorized by the law to provide that quick response. In the committee meetings, there will be a discussion on that, this allows us to provide a quick response, a more controlled response for situations that may come with individuals out of the school building and maybe a situation with an individual within the school. Other than that, there's no restriction on police force in the city.
Thank you for that, I'm just going to make one final statement, with regards to that point that I made about cooperative agreement, that is a specific clause to address to the stationary issues that may arise once you form this police force if it did not pass. Now, I'd like to make one final statement regarding my position on this proposal. I think that what I'm seeing here in the York City school district is a alarming trend where I've done some preliminary research, and I'm not alone in this research, others are looking as well, from outside of the district and the building, where it seems that increasingly we're seeing citations such as disorderly conduct and harassment issued to students for what can be typically categorized as minor disruptive behavior. For example, nuisance activities, not putting away a phone, refusing to pipe down, let's say, walking down hallways. These are activities that we think are enhancing students' contact with the criminal justice system at times where I would say these students shouldn't be falling prey to the criminal justice system. These matters should be handled as disciplinary issues, not as issues that should be punished through the criminal justice system. So one goal I would like to see implemented, but it appears at this point that not much deliberation has taken place, would be that you have a goal to lessen the impact of the criminalization that's happening and to restrict this school prison pipeline that we see now forming in the city's school district. Because once a child, let's say, gets a fine for disorderly conduct and the public training that comes along with it, you're creating an obstacle and you're creating a marginalization that's going to fall on these children, and I know because I'm someone who dropped out of the city school district, to retract, not want to be here, because nobody wants to feel to be fallen prey to a criminal justice system where they thought they were entering a law, a learning environment. So I want you to be cognizant of that fact, and I also want you to understand that the studies are conclusive and the statistics show that where these in-house persistent police presences are formed in school districts, English learners, which I was one of them, English is my second language, low-income and special needs students, which are subsets in the school district which are very well represented here, have a large amount of these classes of students. They're disproportionately affected by these sorts of campuses where we have police residences 24/7. And that criminalization aspect is a very real aspect. So along with the procedural aspects and some of the parameters that I would like to see implemented if you do institute this force, I would want you to address some of these issues please. Seek further community input, and I would advise that you put the plans on hold. It's time to open hands. I'm thankful for your building.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll have a discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have several questions, first of all, I'd like to know what the spoken curfew would be, the parameters on which they act under and the requirements, clear duties in their governance, rules and roles and responsibilities. And Mr. Gomez commented on this one versus police involvement. I think that this is something that we need to look into further. It's not that it's going to be a void because the Court of Common Pleas have to approve it, but prior to me wanting to approve it, I need to see what's going to govern and lead this police force. And what is the selection process? Because I know police officers have to go through certain requirements, and I don't want to just appoint police officers, I want to know, make sure that we say that they're slow to handle. And those are my concerns, and that's why I put it...
Good evening. I hope that I'll be able to answer whatever questions you have, just give them one at a time and...
Do you have the rules and roles and all of that which you can explain to me? So then you might not be able to answer all of them.
The majority of that, probably eighty-five percent, I feel comfortable that I can pull out of my head because of the fact that I've kind of lived and lived this for several years now and being an actual twenty certified police officer, school police officer, and I prove the majority of this. So I'm kind of confident that those gives me the... So just the one question at a time, but yeah, I'll try my best to answer them.
Just talking about the spoken curfew, the responsibilities for this police force?
As far as responsibilities, first of all, and again, I didn't want to actually speak to both of you, then me and Mr. Gomez actually go pretty far back, actually really far back. As far as responsibilities, just before I jump into that, I did want to say, like you alluded to a minute ago, this is actually just the initial step. It's basically the proposal and the actual initiative, the work of Dr. Holmes, coming to you in this form and this format is our way of bringing it to the public and publicly asking the board if you do want to go down that road. That's basically where we're at currently as far as the steps and as far as the steps in the process. So starting with coming to you all, the school board, to ask if you're interested in that in front of the public to see if everybody kind of felt about it and how comfortable we would be...
In support.
To support it, being able to freshen up myself and the other guys who be working as officers, just to be able to start to go down that step. Because it's unlikely to be, I feel like, we lose the whole process. The actual duties and scope for our individual officers, currently what we do mirrors seeing the district four years ago, five years ago, coming off of the audit that was actually conducted and done by the independent company that came in and identified the needs and the holes. Did a wonderful job creating the positions, a safety and security officer. Safety and security officer position, again like you said, looking around the country, directly mirrors and reflects the duties that a school police officer or a public school police officer would do. When the actual job description was designed, it in detail looked for candidates that were coming with a background and a training in the past and the expertise to be able to perform that job, whether it was LEO, loan, corporate training, public safety training, so on and so forth. But in looking for that, the safety and security positions have already looked for those individuals that had those qualities and the responsibilities that were actually initially offered in that job announcement were very extremely similar to that that would be the case for a school police officer. Where the two things start to split is the key to the position in the other, what the actual person presents on the other end. Whereas currently, what a safety and security officer can do as far as leverage or reinforcement or what they have with their brain to the table when they come to the hallway, the campus site, outside the building, their brain is less, so that's the only thing that actually definitely would be responsibility or the difference in responsibilities is going to come in the enforcement side. Currently, when myself and my guys get there, we're coming in and we're engaging, we're breaking up all the incidents and physical occasions, whatever may be, we're looking to escalate, we're looking to contain and control the situation. But we have a limited level of authority, which they give you a limited level of protection from liabilities and would also come with a limited level of any kind of protection, like either way, whether it's self-protection or so on and so forth, which is kind of coming with a lot of limits. Now, the spans of those limits is where the school policing proposal actually comes from. In that span, to kind of bridge in the gap, there's nothing as a private security entity that's going to give the legal protections to us as a school district that you would buy, that you would get by authorizing the school policing thing. So if my guys currently, and I'm not saying whether they're doing that, I'm not going to speak of any specific incidents, but if my guys break up a fight currently right now on dish property, it's a civilian break up a fight on dish property. If your guys start to break up in physical occasion, whether between adults or between students or your parents, as a police officer, they're coming with the common pleas protections behind them and for liability purposes. So what they can do, what they're being asked to do, needing to stop people, needing to utilize any kind of force, moving people along, being able to give that order, have people move along, it's a very limited scope currently. That's funny you say that, and again, give us internal protections as a district. So responsibilities for us, we don't see a lot of our job duties changing because we're currently doing almost 24/7 coverage on school campuses, inside building, outside building, immediate coverage. We use the expression as far as the eye can see. We actually, being a district, we're kind of duty bound for the portal model to have to give certain coverage and certain protections to our students from our building to the home. So we try our best to do that in a safe way. This would allow us to do it safer, further. But we already do have that duty bound expectation that we have on ourselves. So like you said, myself and the other guys, a lot of our responsibilities aren't going to change and just it would give us additional means to do the job better on the other hand. And I don't want to jump ahead of your questions too far, but as far as the criminalization of the district and the students, and I do understand what Mr. Gomez is talking about with that, that was actually part of where we're starting to go in the presentation we presented, which I think is one of the neatest caveats about the program, is currently a school building, a school community is a microcosm of anything, it's a little mini city. You're going to have law enforcement there either way, whether it's coming from us, whether it's coming from the York City Police Department, no matter the municipality, if you will, so provided, there is going to need to be law enforcement there, just like there is in society period. With this, it's the hat that the person has on their head or the flag that they're flying. The primary means of any kind of enforcement in the building would then be actually being done by the district, for the district. So rather than having the people that are coming in to look at the enforcement in your building coming from an outside agency that's not truly responsible to you, it would change and it would be being done by an entity that is solely responsible to you. So again, like you said in the presentation, it would actually give itself, the board, district administration, the families, the community, more control over the enforcement process because we're coming in as district employees that are district employee first. And that doesn't change even through the commission process with the Court of Common Pleas. So I didn't want to skip ahead too far, but...
Qualifications?
The qualifications, and again, this is actually part of the Court of Common Pleas process. We would in essence, if you guys are willing to open the door to this, we would in essence then have to open our lives, our background, who we were, and where we have been as professionals and submit it all to whatever Court of Common Pleas judge to review. It's an extensive review because they're going to see every certification, every course, every job that you worked at, different things you did, your references you submitted on, and they're going to start by reviewing that. The next thing that could then happen if the judge isn't satisfied, they may say, I need this person, this person, and this person to come down for an interview in my chambers. Or they may say, okay, you have all the corporate training that we're looking for to be able to perform the job, you got five years of experience doing it in the buildings with no authority, if you will, or any kind of equipment or anything, and just approve it, or they could actually ask for more. But it would start by initially our resumes, our background, or anybody that wants to be a representative, or be... All that information gets submitted to the judge as to start the candidacy process.
So my final question to this superintendent, based on your explanation, do we put our people to force in terms of creating positions and naming officers? I mean, I thought we were opening to go for the conversation as opposed to developing and implementing that process.
Part of the process is to seek permission to be forward with the individuals that are currently handling these positions to see if they would qualify to become school police officers. It doesn't guarantee that by submitting these names, these individuals will automatically be in the roles, that it gives us as the opportunity to submit their names before the Court of Common Pleas.
So we could submit their name, but we need to act upon making them a school. Police officers prior to submission of their names.
My understanding of the process would be, if this resolution is approved, then again, as Mr. Mulgrew says, they would go, we would file applications with the court to see if the court would approve these individuals. If any or all of them are approved as not individuals, as school police officers, then the school district or the board would be in a position of creating the position of school police officer and appointing a number of officers that the board and the administration would desire. As part of that process, I believe job descriptions would be created, probably policies to address roles and duties and various things. So again, instead of trying to go through that process of developing all those things only to find out that for some reason or another, the court might not approve the individuals, we decided to take the steps of recommending the creation of school or designating these individuals and then seeking court approval, and then it would come back to the board for further process.
So the next step would be for the board to actually create the positions? And then once those positions would be created, then it would be denominated individuals to fill those positions?
And that's what I'm asking, so is it presumptuous of us to list names now prior to that process? Or you want to see if they could be recommended?
I believe under the school code we're required to designate the individuals.
You would have to send specific...
Okay, so you have to send...
Yeah, even if you didn't want us and you wanted to export it or whatever, but you went... You would have to send specific people to be critique, and specific backgrounds, specific resumes, to actually be critique in the process. Not that it would in any way allow us to start enforcing anything or moving forward with anything. It would just be the beginning of the process. The next phase then would be, and like I said again, it's something that we've been exploring for a long time, at least in dream phase, but the next phases would then kind of come back in front of you again, and be working with Dr. Holmes more and working with you guys more. In addition to moving from kind of a public security or public safety kind of a model and the whole modern model and stuff that we use, it would give you then, what Mr. Gomez was talking about, being a law enforcement entity or agency, a very standardized SOP or standard operating procedure does automatically for us come along with it. So when you would get this, you would be getting a very thick booklet of how we work, what we do when, how the response would be for given what situation, we would actually, again, like I said, if anything, give them a more professional, more structured model that we would be working with as a public safety entity inside the district. Kind of rather that too.
So about moving this night, automatically changing their title to police school officers or that's not...
Yeah, we would still have to, again, like, so you're just blessing us to move forward and start to talk to the judge. The judge could come back and say, no, don't bother.
Michael, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'd say this is over and done, and there's a change in personnel, some of these are retiring, whatever. Does each member of that police officer, school police, need to go to the magistrate to be improved?
Absolutely, with this model moving in this, moving this direction, retention of personnel would then become extremely critical because each time somebody would shuffle out and a new person would shuffle in, they would then, it would be that group set of standards, they would have to jump through all the hoops from the district to get hired, and then once you get hired, everything needs to be set down to Court of Common Pleas, and everything starts all over again if you jump through the hoops of Court of Common Pleas. So yeah, you're absolutely right, it would kind of start all over again.
From A and B, yes. From the information that has been provided to the board as a synopsis, Pennsylvania School Board and legal council has found that moving to this would reduce...
Pennsylvania School Board and Bureau of Council has found that moving to this would reduce certain legal requirements, that it would be a neutral or cost-saving in the first two, three years of operating this. There are no weapons that would initially be carried, guns and sprays, tasers, and if any of those things are ever considered, it would come before the school board to re-review as a matter of policy and public comment before any of those intruders from the way things are operating at this moment in our schools. That those individuals who ever would be going through the process would have to have qualifications, the education, and the experience to be able to do that. It's not just anyone who lies to the child. So, there are many checks and balances along the step to make sure that as being received with this, it's legal, it's proper, and it's well followed out and discussed. Is that a synopsis of what the board has been hearing or the time we've been discussing this? Are there questions from the board?
I don't have a question. I just want to, I mentioned this once before, and I just want to reiterate this because I think when we're looking at the public perception of the safety of this school district and the individual schools, one of the reasons why many of the students have chosen to go to charter schools was the fact that they didn't feel safe here. And so, looking at everything that we brought up, and I agree 100% that there are a lot of things that we have to consider before we actually get to that point. The one thing that I want to at least ask Mr. Mulgrew all the time is, by actually creating a school police force, we're now becoming a part of the emergency network, correct?
Yes, sir.
Which means that is going to enhance the response time considerably when it comes to any kind of criminal activity in this building, whether it's among students or outside intruders. Is that also correct?
Absolutely.
And I think that's certainly worth considering, at the very least worth considering. And again, once we go through everything and we feel satisfied with, I think that that's going to show a number of people, including the people of this board, that we have intentions of making this a safe school district and making the students that are here feel comfortable about learning and wanting to be here. And I think that can be overlooked. Thank you.
I wanted to... Yeah, I wanted to ask Mr. Metcalfe, as our chief recovery officer, how this might play into that safety, security portion of the recovery plan?
In listening to the discussion and what I know about it, I certainly, as an individual, am in favor of it as far as the recovery plan is concerned. If we use the analogy of academics, the CDC sets the standards. If we use improvement plans, it does not get involved with the mechanisms to do that. So, I think we intend, as Mr. Metta said, it is very clear, safety is an issue, so therefore improving it is an issue. So, any actions or improvements in that regard will be enforced by the recovery plan, but the specific means to that are not prescribed. So, in my personal judgment, this sounds like a separate direction, but again, it's up to the administration and the board and the district employees who are experts in that field to make those recommendations.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
There was some recent comments, I guess, in articles regarding the rationale for why we want to do this. I think it's important that the community understands that we, it is our job to do everything that we can to protect our students and staff, provide them with the safest learning environment possible. With all the unfortunate incidents that are happening out there in the world and in this country over the last few years, we believe, the administration believes, that this is a positive step, and this is an opportunity for us to provide an extra layer of safety and security for our students and for our staff, which is why when Mr. Mulgrew came to me with the idea, we brought it to the board so the board could determine whether we wanted to move forward. There's also been a lot of talk about, well, what's happening and why are you doing that? And I understand that that may be the perception. However, this was never meant to be a vote to start tomorrow. This was, the purpose of this was to get your approval to take it to the next level. And then, once we take it to the next level, we will take it step by step incrementally. However, we believe that anything that grants us more security and safety is best for our kids. And I know as a board, that's what you want to do.
How long have you been involved in?
Five years.
Years.
Five years.
Yeah, Mr. Mulgrew, in terms of training and just implicitly your routine is approved, how closely assimilated is the training being to that of the New York City?
It would be the same, and it would depend on, it's going to depend on equipment options that you get that the district would want to actually utilize. But even with that, all the training is going to be the same, whether it was New York City Police Department, New York County Sheriff's Department, West Shore Borough, or for that respect, Wellspan and New York Hospital's safety team, or this department. It would still be the same vocab, path, all the different certifications that are being used, and then the actual summary citations that would be utilized, if we were to use any, would be the same. And then the doors of some of the other directions it opens is up to, and discussions of things that we might be able to do, to be creative, even to kind of move from the criminal, the over-criminalization. Even fade panels and different kind of mechanisms that we currently can't use in our role as standalone district safety and security staff. We would then have the door open to us by being public law enforcement. So, some of those other recourse that we would get would actually open up. We would be using the same citations, the same formats. We would be meeting with a lot of same judges. We would have all the, and this is one of the things Dr. Holmes was very firm about and expressed to us and kind of let me know that I needed to kind of have that come to a realization meeting with my guys because then we have the expectations and the standards for us change. We have all the expectations that are coming from you all as district leadership, but then we also have all the expectations that are coming from the actual county government and state and the federal government by being a law enforcement entity. So, it actually would get stricter on us, but all the guidelines then do allow for competent training. So, we would be utilizing all the same methods and everything.
And is it safe to say that some of the training will be done outside of the Elizabeth Town Police Academy?
At the majority of the stuff in this region anymore, I would have, I would have this academy. That's where the actuarial spending training is actually at. And they offer the, PACT offers the widest base and the most courses on a regular basis for everything. But we actually are looking to partner with some of the local agencies and local entities that are actually already have run into actually kind of to get in some of their in-house training. We have the continuity of working with other departments. It's not that we don't love any, but training with other departments is the continuity for things to actually occur.
Thank you, Mr. Mulgrew, and I just, I know you're sitting on one of those channels and don't have any doubt about your ability to do your job, but we owe it to the public to make sure we do our diligence, ask the questions that we need, to help us make this decision.
Any comments from the board? Do you understand the question for you? When we move on this, does it mean we're standing on a level that we don't worry that the names that are listed in the county's agenda are in the new leadership suite?
Yes.
How many of the board members?
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Braylon?
Yes.
Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Mendez?
Yes.
Vice President Miller?
Yes.